We have a reservation for a police officer today. Full copy of the letters there and we just added that to your consent agenda.
Add it up to the new, sort of, a new, new agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he's already got another job, yeah. And has to go.
Right. How you doing?
Both of them. Boy don't get him. Then it's, yeah.
It'll be a, it'll be a ruckus. I'm guessing.
Monty was out today in Foley.
I was planning on.
When did he come down?
Yes.
Grass wasn't greeter over there, huh?
Didn't.
My guess.
You would.
If they're going to go to some club chat, wouldn't they?
Yeah, right.
I thought you also saw, I think you also saw what in the state issue is, and it's driven into our heads. This goes back to last year because.
Oh, really?
So, the Democrats.
Yeah.
I'm so tired of it because we're not working together.
To you, if you're happy with it, you can have it in a bonded party like Bill Spurges. Can you make it in a joint, all of this? You get money? No. The way.
Because I hear that. That was another help.
No, no.
Was it ready? How, how do you like that? She's, she's going home for a while. Did, did she go back down today?
That's what.
Yeah. That's, 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 she chooses the nastiest weather sometimes. Yeah.
That's what I said too. I was like, you could have picked any other time to come.
I know, I know. Well, I went to this thing, I'm afraid I felt kind of better than any good old girl, but we had, you know, met with Schultz. I talked to one of them.
All right, it's five thirty. We'll call the meeting order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, on its own accord, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been approved. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Consent agenda? Uh, is there a motion for that?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Mayor, uh, under the resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five approving no me, no mo me.
Yep.
This is voluntary.
Correct.
And we want to make sure that the people know that, uh, if there is an issue. Um, talk to your neighbor. You don't have to call City Hall on this. It's strictly voluntary. So with that, that's all I have.
Yep. Anyone else? Uh, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Mayor's comments in open forum? Is there anyone here for open forum? If so, come forward and state your name and your address, please? Thank you.
Deborah Olson has six hundred D W S. So I wanted to begin, I see that on the agenda we have Emma Forston as our new manager. Yes, green. Okay. So I wanted to thank our new manager, pool manager, Emma Forston, and welcome her to, um, as our pool manager. Um, I see that she's going to have a few difficulties this year. One is to acquire and retain certified lifeguards. This can be a very difficult task. Cause my understanding is that only five people this year pass the qualifications to be a certified lifeguard. And, and so I'm hoping that, you know, one suggestion, and I brought this up before, is reimbursing and or helping our lifeguards pay for a portion to become certified. Um, that's one option. Uh, we're going to have quite a few that are going to be leaving soon for college. And I realize we have a council member who is against, uh, the spending budget amount to sustain the pool operation. But that pool is an attractive to entice new growth, especially our young families. But I would like to see a tiered cost for swim lessons. Uh, granted, it's been a long time since I had kids or grandkids in swim lessons, but I know a lot of people were out of city that signed up for swim lessons. If there could be a tiered price for in-towners and out-of-towners. And also if we could, the city itself could utilize a more diverse advertising about our city pool. I hear from people Clearwater, St. Augusta, they're just thrilled that we still have our pool. But that's not reaching a large enough portion of people. And, you know, there is a limited number of outdoor pools available for recreational use. I mean, let's make the most of ours. When St. Cloud had their pool, they did things as, in neighborhoods, they used buses to pick up and shuttle kids to come for a day of swimming. That might be an option. Combining things like the movies and the day of swim. If those things can all be incorporated so we can get our pool usage to capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, uh, for open forum?
I just got one concern.
You gotta go up there, please.
Okay.
Name and address, please.
Kim Lateral, five eleven Broadway. Uh, I know this is a little bit down the road here because of the weather and all this stuff, but it's, uh, I don't, you know, you guys know where I live. And there's a house extremely close to me and there has been some tough luck there. But as soon as the weather permits and stuff, I think Mark knows which house I'm talking about. It's starting to get extremely raggy around there and, um, I understand that, you know, they had some tough luck and stuff there. But, uh, I, I, I think that you guys better consider that something's gotta, something's gotta change up there. Cause it's like the North End is getting forgotten about. Stuff is falling in the toilet. Gary, you know as well as anybody, that used to be the nicest, cleanest. It's turning into a ghetto.
I went by yesterday, cause that's been on my list.
It's terrible.
And nothing's being done about it and.
They get, there's fuel oil and oil running down the driveway with the snowmelt. It's going right down the edge of the street. And you know where that water heads. But it's, when the water gets high enough, it started to come up in my yard. And diesel fuel and grass don't mix. So I just wanted to bring your attention that, you know, I understand, I mean, it's the weather and it's, and stuff going on there.
Appreciate that.
Somewhere down the line, something's gotta change there.
I don't think we have to wait that long. Uh, it's been an eyesore for quite some time.
Well, I think there's only a certain part of your lot that can be, he haul, the individual haul gravel and covers the front yard with gravel can s- thinking that he can park on that. Well.
He covers a whole lot.
I just wanted to bring your attention, somewhere down the line, something's gotta change.
Thank you. We'll get on it.
Anyone else for open forum? Yep, got one more here. Name and address, please.
Name is Michael Bukwich. I live at one seventy Cooper Avenue. I noticed on the board, it is for old business and I understand it goes foot. I had a hard time getting here. It's on, uh, the wastewater project and I actually have a statement that is typed up by the family. Um, I think a good statement tonight was that dreamed, we moved into St. Cloud. Um, we dreamed of a time of moving back to Foley. Because at the time it was a humble, humble place, a simple town to raise your children in. But we're curious on how we're expected to afford the extreme increases in the water bills. We've actually read a thing recently that was posted and our daycare provider actually showed it to us. Where they're supposed to be increased by twenty twenty-five by seventy-seven percent. Right now, when I moved here, my bills were roughly fifty dollars a month. So I was paying about a hundred and fifty dollars every three months. My bills now are over four hundred dollars.
A month?
A month. And it's getting outrageous. Keep going here and says, I, we're not sure what we're supposed to do when it comes to that is get second jobs. Like what kind of community is it where parents need to work two jobs to afford the water bills? And that's not even the tops of it yet. I mean, our property taxes, and I understand the city don't have to do with, with a lot of that. But our property taxes are going up too. And it's getting outrageous. My homesteading now has dropped to where my bills on my property taxes are so high. And combining that with my water bill being so high. We're gonna have to either leave Foley, which we don't want to do. Or we're gonna have to get second, third jobs. And I have two little kids sitting right there in the back row. That I would love to be able to be home with them. And I'm already working sixty hours a week. I don't know how much more of not be there for my kids I can be. We understand at the time that the project was supposed to have state funding. And we understand, Mr. Mayor, that you weren't the mayor at the time. But there was poor planning on the financial, on the project. To turn around and start a project without having the money for it. Am I, do I go out and, and start building stuff or, or do all of that without having money for it? No. And I, I don't see how my city did either. And I understand it needed to get done. And I understand that it should have been done a long time ago. But to turn around and up all of this stuff to drive out the middle class, cause honestly, we're the middle class and the next generation for Foley residents. And we can't afford to live here. And I've talked to many people around town, between my daycare providers and my neighbors. And they all say the same thing. If it keeps going the way it's going, we're gonna have to move. Cause it's getting frustrating. Um, I, I, I'm not sure how to go about it, but I figured this was the best place to bring it up. So, I, I don't know where to go from here, to be honest with you. Cause if it keeps going the way it's going, we're gonna be leaving town and I think a lot of other people are on the same track of doing the same. So if everybody I talked to, they're already talking about it. And if they keep talking about it eventually, they're gonna do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? All right. No one else? We're gonna go, uh, Foley Cross Center. Are they here tonight? Yeah, if you wanna come up, I guess you have a presentation for us, please?
You just thought you know when you want to. Okay. Well, I, um, wanna thank you for allowing us to come to this meeting tonight. I am the new director of the Cross Center and, um, I have some big shoes to fill as Carol was there for thirty plus years. So I'm, I'm the new face in the community and, uh.
Does the face have a name?
I do, thank you for asking. My name is Jennifer Fokama.
Thank you.
And I, uh, reside in Ogobee, Minnesota, so I drive a little ways, but I'm honored to be able to work here in this community. It's been a very nice change and I've been here since May, so. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Cross Center, cause, um, as we just heard, there is some, you know, increases happening and, um, the Cross Center is one place that a lot of the community can go to for help, whether it's food and or clothing, household items, those types of things. And as you see, our hours are Mondays from one to four and six to eight, and then again on Thursdays from ten to three. Um, we are closed some holidays and we just ask that people call, um, to check what holidays those are. And also if school is closed because of weather, um, we are also closed for the safety of our volunteers. Cause, um, the Cross Center is run, uh, ninety-nine percent of volunteers. So, um, we have to keep everybody safe and that's how we do that. The exciting thing, and I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the Cross Center has been in the cow, in the city since nineteen eighty-two. Um, it started out very small and like I said, now we have the full, uh, food shelf and clothing. Uh, so we have expanded since nineteen eighty-two, which is very exciting. Um, our mission is to provide encouragement and assistance to residents in Benton County. Um, we are expect, you know, who are expecting short-term difficulties in meeting their basic needs. Uh, food and clothing. Assistances, assistance is provided regardless of the race, color, creed, uh, for those who qualify. Cross Center of Benton County, uh, serves all low-income persons living in Benton County, including persons with disability to the best of our ability. Things that we do at the Cross Center to serve those in need, we provide food. We have clothing, household items, smaller household, excuse me, smaller household items. We also provide students with school supplies at the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year if they need be. Uh, we also started a kids' club. Students are able to come in during this, the summer break. And they're, they get a bag and we have five quick easy meals. We have five snacks and then two beverages, um, to hope that gets them through the week. Uh, especially, you know, last summer, the school wasn't able to pro- provide for all students. So we were able to pick up some of those students that needed that extra food. Uh, we are also fortunate to be able to do special, uh, holiday foods, whether it's hams, turkeys, those types of things during Easter, uh, Christmas, Thanksgiving. And then we, uh, just wanna be there to be friendly, supportive and give information to those that need help finding different programs that are in the area. I just put a couple pictures of, of what the, the food area of the Cross Center looks like. Uh, the first picture there on the left is our back storage area of extra supplies. And then, uh, the top picture in the middle is two young, uh, volunteers that we had, obviously getting ready, packing up somebody's food. And then we have a picture of the hygiene products that we have. Um, that other group of young children there in the upper right-hand corner, that is, they were getting the summer program bags ready for, for kids that needed. And then another volunteer with a, uh, another younger child in the other picture there. So I'm just proud of, of having younger volunteers that have been stepping up into the Cross Center too, which is very exciting. Uh, ways that the city can help or ways that anybody here, um, this evening can help is by volunteering. Um, I do have some volunteer forms available if you'd like to come stood. Um, you can also email us at thecrosscenter@hotmail.com or even give us a call or stop in. Um, financial donations are also very important to the Cross Center. Um, we depend on the community and support from everyone in the area to keep the Cross Center going as, as strong as we have for the last thirty-plus years. So thank you for the, those that, um, continue to do the financial donations. Um, you can either donate, uh, through the mail. Again, you can stop in. Um, and then another important thing is to follow us on Facebook. Uh, you know, share and like us on Facebook, get the word out for those that are in need because as we've heard, you know, I think the need is continually getting, um, larger as the weeks go on. The exciting thing in March, um, they have a March campaign. It used to be basically just one day that Minnesota was promoting a donation for food shelves. Last year and this year, because of the increase of need, they have extended the time period. This year, it actually went from February twenty-seventh through, uh, April ninth. So we still have a few more days to look for donations. But the exciting thing about that is any food poundage, um, or money donations that the Cross Center gives, uh, they will match, um, us until the May ninth end of cop, uh, the campaign. So I think it's very important that the community and everybody knows, um, March, I mean, excuse me, all the time is very important that we get donations to keep the Cross Center going. But March is a very important time because of the campaign that they, that Minnesota has now started and, and makes it strong for us to be able to get matched during that time as well. So I think it's very important that everybody remembers March for food shelves during, throughout the year. And then like I said, we, uh, the Cross Center also has clothing and household items, so I just wanted to show a few pictures of, uh, some of the items that we have available. Um, and again, it, I think it's important that, you know, sometimes people do, you may not need the food for support, but they just can't afford some clothes or they just need a pair of dress shoes for Easter. The Cross Center is available for anybody in the community. They do not have to come in and need to use the food side of the food shelf. They can just come in and just, you know, grab a Foley shirt if they need it, you know, cause a student has an activity at school or something. Um, we're always looking for dona- donations as well for clothing and household items. And as you can see, we get some very, very nice items from the community. So thank you very much. And unfortunately, as we know, the increases has hit all of us, um, whether it's businesses, individuals, us as nonprofit. Um, things have gone outrageous in increases. Um, the biggest one obviously is phone and internet for us at the Cross Center. Um, but I think it's very important that, um, everyone sees the increase of ninety-six percent in three, you know, in the three months of, of food that we buy at second harvest. We get all, we get most of our food from second harvest. Um, and thanks to Colburns here in town, Colburns is amazing what they donate to us. Um, but at second harvest, we, we as the Cross Center have to purchase and pay. Um, and unfortunately, that increase is ninety-six percent at this time. Um, so we're able to get discounts on our food, so I feel the pain for families with children. I don't have young children anymore, but if we're paying ninety-six percent increase, um, you know, families are paying quite largely as well. So, um, the other thing I wanted to note, uh, point out too is the water bill increase is twenty-two percent for us at the Cross Center. Um, even though we're nonprofit, so if we're twenty-two percent, um, I'm not sure what individual's increase is. Um, so with that said, um, it's very important too, I think that, um, you know, it's not just the Cross Center's food shelf that is getting hit. Um, throughout Minnesota, the average food shelf is increasing, usage of thirty percent. Um, we are seeing here at the Cross Center, uh, thirty-five percent increase, uh, just since last year. Um, as you see in two thousand twenty-two, the numbers on the left there, that's for the whole year of two thousand twenty-two. Where the column where it says two thousand twenty-three, that's just the first three months numbers. Um, so you can see, you know, thirty-five percent increases. I, I'm assuming it's probably going to continue to go up in the next three more months. Um, so we're hoping as the Cross Center that, um, possibly the city would think about putting into our, your budget, um, something for the Cross Center. Whether it's helping with the water bill or, you know, helping with a building project or just helping with the March campaign type thing. Um, and I think we just all, from the Cross Center, the board members that I have here with me, um, wanna thank the city and the, the whole Benton County, um, for helping us. In the last, you know, since nineteen eighty-two, um, it's been a wonderful program. I, like I said, I'm new to the Cross Center, um, but I'm amazed at the support that the community has given us, um, just since May. And I hope it continues. And I'm asking that the city hopefully can think of us in the budget as well. Because I think we're very, you know, we're asset to the community. Um, for those whose water bill is going up or their grocery bill is going up. Uh, the Cross Center is there to help. Um, but we need the help to be able to continue to support those that we have been able to support through the years. So, thank you and, um, I'm glad to be a part of this community.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council have questions?
Do you happen to know where the increase is coming from as far as, uh, the visits you're seeing and the amount of traffic?
I would say, uh, the increase in groceries. The increase in gas. Um, and unfortunately, the increase in water bill is why we're doing what I'm doing.
Do you only help people that live in Benton County?
Um, that is our goal and that's our mission. However, um, anybody that walks through the door, we will not turn them away. Um, obviously, we have the supplies. We were, we'll, you know, help anybody that needs it, especially the clothes side. And then like I said, that's, that's donations from everybody around the areas, not even just Benton County. Um, so especially the clothes side is available for anybody. Um, the food, we prefer to have it Benton. Um the food, we prefer to have it Benton County residents, um but we will never turn it away.
Has the city ever done anything for the cross center in the past?
I think we do, don't we?
We make a donation every year.
No, no, we haven't. No, we we have care budgeted for, but we have not budgeted for the cross center.
Yeah, we're separate from the care.
Jennifer, anyone else? Thank you for coming.
All right. Like I said, I do have applications for volunteers if anybody's interested. And I do have um a little flyer with our hours and our dates on there as well, if anybody would like to talk about that.
Could you leave one of those volunteer applications?
Yes.
Here? Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, seven, discussion on Highway twenty-three pedestrian crossings. Has everyone kind of looked over within the council at this or have any questions right off the start? So when it says, my question I have is uh, I'm on the right page, hold on. So when it's the two RFBs on this street, I can't think of it, Broadway. So it's one on each side.
Correct, yep.
Yep, facing one direction. It's not not facing both directions. Or I mean, they don't make a sign that does that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, at the beacon, you can see from both directions, yeah.
Okay.
You should be able to see both from both directions, yeah.
Okay, and then the three on the roundabout.
Three on the roundabout, yep.
Okay. So are we deciding tonight if we want to go ahead with one of the uh project engineers here or engineers, company?
Right. Were we getting an update from last month?
Yeah.
With regards to the uh, was it the ramps?
Yeah, um, you know, maybe some air, my council. Um there was a discussion about the pet ramps and reconstructing those pet ramps at last week, uh last month's council meeting. Um after that meeting, we had a discussion with MinDOT. And they indicated that uh if that work occurs when they're on site during their, you know, when they're completing the project, then they will cover that work as far as the inspection of the rework of the pet ramps, testing, staking, stuff like that, so. Um the 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 proposal in front of you from S E H uh reflects that now. As far as assuming that we, that city would have to, you know, pay for that or to have a C staff representative representative on site for that. Um assumption now in the proposal is that MinDOT will be doing that.
Was that if the work was completed while they were still on site?
Correct. Yep, and right now we are assuming that that would be the case. We don't see an issue why they cannot rework those pet ramps, install the push button foundations during the time that they're on site. And then if the lead time of the push buttons, that they don't get here until August, September, or whenever that may be, they can just install them on the foundations then.
Very good. Anybody else have questions about this?
Oh, we got, we got the bid on whatever the the process of putting these up. There's some question here if there's some special equipment use that's over and above the cost of what your bid is. There's an article here, equipment utilization.
Can you point that out to me, Council Gary?
Ah. Well, they're not, yeah, it'd be letter agreement four.
Letter C.
Letter C up there, equipment utilization. It says it's a special equipment that has to be acquired. The client will have to, you know, pay over and above from what I understand it. That would be over and above your bid.
Oh, in our uh yeah, that that's in our our standards attachments that we have in every proposal uh regardless of the project, whether it's a hourly or lump sum project. That's, I, you're referring to um is it the exhibit B? What is that B up there? I didn't print that out here. So um exhibit A one or exhibit exhibit B?
Exhibit A one.
You, equipment utilization.
The one prior, Sarah.
No.
Keep going.
On the page, all by itself.
Keep going back, other way, other way. Right there.
Right there. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, again, this is in in every one of our agreements. Um based on, we have our, in our rate table that we provide you guys every year, there's a list of, you know, survey equipment, mileage, you know, RPR vehicles that we have in that rate table that we provide you every year. Anything that's not on that list is something that would be subject to the change, I guess. Now, I don't anticipate anything different than the other, the other construction project, but that's what we have in there in our legal language, yeah.
All right. Jared with Bolton. Jared Vogi, excuse me, you're still with the number we got here from you guys? Okay, so if there's no other discussion on this, uh I would entertain a motion for picking a engineering firm for this project.
No, it's about the figure of eighty-five bucks.
Yeah.
It's almost like reading encyclopedia to get the the bid process.
Well, I'll second that.
What are we making the motion for?
To accept the bid from S E H.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the bid from S E H. Is there any further discussion on this?
Uh I just have a comment, Jared. Let's make sure that it's done correctly and done completely, so we don't have to go backwards.
Yep.
Thank you.
Understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not all for this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, we'll go to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
All right, um Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will first start off with our stat report, which you received for the month of March. We had three hundred and fifty-three calls. Um this is up from February. Um some things that are increased, um equipment violations, so that are your expired tabs, your light, taillights out, headlights out, that all falls under there. Uh medicals and welfare's checks are up. Animal complaints, unfortunately, we get calls to those and we go chasing after dogs and cats. Um parking tickets are down and now it's March is over and we're into April. So there is no winter parking enforcement unless the city declares a snow emergency. And they may do that, just if we get a big snowstorm tonight. Um hopefully, people use common sense and be nice to the plow truck man and stay off of the roads. Um another part is our civil calls are up, so that's like our civil standbys, child custody exchanges, um are those. Um some other things I have, um backgrounds for the three new part timers are pretty much done. Um one, they have, two of them had their physicals this week. And then a couple of weeks, the other one has a psychological, then they'll be up and ready to go. Um we have been extremely busy with big investigations that take a lot of time. A lot of sitting in front of a computer, doing warrants, obtaining subpoenas. So you may not see us out patrolling as much as you are used to. It's because we're a lot of administrative side to get those. Um I know I have spoken to some of you in regards to what we have going on and it's taken, it does take a lot of time. You know, people say nothing happens in Foley, it does, so. Um I'm also to think spring bike rodeo, I've been working away on that. Um getting ready for that event on June seventeenth at Lyons Park from ten AM to one PM for ages ten and under. Um lots of donations coming in already for that. And you may have heard since due to social media world, and Brandon, you were there too, that today we were called, and I'll read to you my new press release that went out. Uh myself and Deputy County Sheriff's Office was responded to Falcon Bank today in reference to a bomb threat that was called in. Um we went on scene, um bank was already evacuated, everything was done perfectly. Um I did call our state resources and we verified that the risk of the threat was minimal. And so myself along with deputies went in and cleared um the building and it was deemed to be, there were no devices or packages were found. Um and the threat, public is not in any threat at, so, but, so we are busy. Do you have anything else for me? I believe that's all I have.
I would just like to suggest that you personally stop and talk to these people at this resident about some kind of cleanup rather than give them a letter or anything, talk to them personally.
I do not know what address you are referring to. If it's the one that I'm, I, if it's the one, I cannot assume because we all know what assuming does. Um but if it's the one I think you are talking about, there, they can park their trailers on their yard because you guys took away that ordinance.
Not in the front yard, no.
Yes, if it's mowed and kept cut.
Not say the front yard, said be beside, beside the the resident or whatever, but not in the front yard.
And theirs is not, theirs is on the side. The front yard, their address is off of Fourth Avenue if that's who you are, if I believe, but
Just a brief draw?
It's a mess.
The ordinance was changed by the council.
I don't think it says the front yard.
And the way for that address, that's not the front yard.
That's the front yard. Anybody that's got a picture window facing the street is the front yard.
Anyone else have anything for the chief?
Resignation of one of our officers.
Yes. Russell Lewinsky works full-time for Saint Joe and he's been working both agencies for over a year now. And he's just, he says it's getting too much to make sure he gets both of his jobs.
Well, we appreciate his service.
Yes.
Anyone else? Not, thank you. City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um tonight, just a quick update on the Trump Highway twenty-three project. Um road restrictions went uh up on the twenty-second of March, those typically last six to eight weeks, uh depending on on the weather and everything. Um but I did speak with Rob Falter, uh with MinDOT. And he is currently uh thinking the project will be starting up again uh May fifteenth. Um that isn't set still yet, that's his current uh projections for that project. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Public Works?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Papenfuss.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh not, not a lot tonight. We had in here the pool tuck pointing. This is for the the back pump house, the one on the east side of the pool. It needs maintenance of a tuck point. And
We did the pool last year, two years ago, right? The pool itself?
The coping we did.
Oh, the coping, all right, all right.
Sounds the same to me. Yeah, so we've been pecking away at stuff there. I mean, we know the one big one coming someday is the bowl. Kind of push that off, but this, if you look at the pool side of it, um is very bad. It's gonna take, and that's one reason it kicked it up, it's gonna take some block replacement and stuff. So it's basically just maintenance on this to continue with the building. And as the price is under twenty-five, we've worked with Castribo many times before. He's local, so I'd like to go with, Castribo tuck pointing for the price of the twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Are we looking for a motion on that?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Need a motion from someone to?
So move that we cover the tuck pointing project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
How long do we, what's longevity of this tuck pointing and stuff before we have to do it?
You know, Jeff, I do not know that. I
It's been a while, I believe.
Oh, I don't remember ever tuck pointing. That roof used to leak a lot. We we did the roof here eight years ago.
Yep.
Whatever, and that helped shed the water, and that's part of the water, their water ran over the front always.
So it's not an ongoing thing, it's
It's been a while.
Right. I don't recall us.
We we did some minor tuck pointing on here, so filled in when we did other buildings, but not an aggressive one like this.
Right.
Any other questions? If not, hold on.
This would be done, the goal is before the pool opens in June seventh or whatever that date is. So if we can get there with the snow.
All right, uh motions made and seconded, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What else you got?
Um we had trouble with our unit heaters in the shop. I had every pair out. Um it was doing lots of weird things. The flames were burning backwards inside and it stunk really bad. He disabled that furnace and said, you're not turning it back on. And the other one he looked at had a crack in the burners down there too, but he was nice and left that. Needless to say, we had replaced them both. They were there today and did it. It's under our threshold limit, but we, just so we, we want to let you know, we had to replace both those heaters in the maintenance shop today. You'll see that. It was six thousand four hundred forty-four dollars, I believe it was for, they had to redo some gas, they had to do the chimney. Those are very old buildings, you know, so you'll see that next month. I do see, and I forgot to mention, if you have any real, we also had wideners. Uh the blower motor went out in the storage shed down there and they had to replace that because that was out. We had to put Temp-Eat in there. So that was done last month, I forgot. We had that expense too, so just so you know, that was there. Um, snow going good. Uh the downtown, I mean, we did our sidewalks like we did the last thirty years and our problem contractor didn't push his snow on the road and I think everything went very well, so.
Guys did a good job.
Went very well, yeah. So other than that, hopefully we're eventually getting done with that. Do you have anything else on the public works side? I don't think I do. I needed tonight. Those heaters have been in there from the beginning, haven't they?
No, those actually, when the fire hall was built, it had four makeup heaters in there to warm the building up. They never kicked in, so shortly after the fire hall was built, we took them out of there. So they're from, may, actually, they're an eighty-eight model or something, but put in in ninety or eighty-nine.
They're used.
They're thirty years, thirty whatever years old. The guy says they, well, we did have a look at the ones in the storage sheds, he said those are real good down there yet, so. Yeah, it was time. Nothing on public works? Real quick on the fire side, um you know, I'd mentioned before, we're moving along. We gotta get on that, filling our assistant chief position. Talked with all the officers, kind of getting a game plan, membership committee. So we'll start moving on that here shortly and see how the, what comes out of it. But you know, we have nothing yet and we'll have anything next month or the month after, hopefully, but like to get it done sooner or later, it's just on the long list of items, so. Unless you have anything else, either one of the departments, questions, comments?
Anyone else? We'll go to, thank you, we'll go to administration, Sarah Brun.
Um first thing I want to mention is we have audit, uh field work next week. Um they will be on site Tuesday, um and we usually, they usually camp out here in the council chambers. You are more than welcome to stop in if you'd like to to chat with them or visit with them or anything. Um and we will hopefully have more Georgia field work finished up by next week. First item for uh action I am going to request is uh finance software. Um we've had this in the budget for a number of years, um actually budgeted over the course of three years. Um and because we know it's quite an investment. Um I have two proposals, one from Civic Systems and one from AccuFund, I always say the name wrong. Um very different systems. We looked at a lot of different ones with software um and government entity software. It kind of varies. Um different parts of the country, you know, where the support is and so forth. Um we are requesting approval of Civic Systems. Um we demoed a number of systems. Civic seems to fit the best for us. Um what we really liked about it is they are pretty close to us, Wisconsin Support, um has gotten great reviews. gotten great reviews and a lot of our neighboring cities that are our size have been using it for a number of years, so we feel their reviews of the system also mean a lot or weigh a lot in our minds. This would be everything, accounts payable, utility billing, our general ledger, budgeting, all of the items that, that we would need. It would be a complete new package. They would also interface with a credit card system and so forth. The other thing that is so critical, not only is our system just very unreliable, we're actually down right now. Went down again, it was down on Friday, it was down yesterday, and it's down again and they cannot figure out what's going on. So besides being unreliable, we also don't have the capability of some of the new technology and security improvements. One thing, for example, Civic would provide positive pay. That's an extra security feature for like our accounts payable checks, another way to prevent fraud, which is good for us as a city. We send out a lot of checks, we pay a lot of people, we want to protect our money and then the people that we pay. So there's also extra security features that come with these new systems, which is really important in this day and age. So, we've had Banyan forever. I guess I'm requesting approval of this Civic Systems quote. I do want you to be mindful, there will be an annual fee of ninety-six hundred dollars that does come with any software system and that is something that we budget for. So just like our electronic filing system, this will have a annual support fee. One of the cool things about the Civic Systems, it does guarantee you software for life, so they constantly upgrade your software. You pay the annual fee, you get all those upgrades included.
Are we taking in any optional detailed costs here other than the bid price?
We, all the options are listed if you keep going. Yeah, there are a couple modules that we could add, but when we talked about it at the staff level, we want to make sure we get what we use now, get that all implemented and, and in place before we add on or spend additional funds. So we may be back, but right now this covers everything that we use or need at this point.
You're going to add any of these anytime.
Yeah, there's some additional functions, but we would rather master the, the stuff we need now and then move to that point.
Council have any other discussion on this? You said you budget for annual support now?
It will start, it, it's, the capital will take out the first year, but then we will budget for it in the next cycle. Yeah.
Is this the three-year payment?
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm reading the very top of it, I can see up there.
So, yes, they can do the three-year payment, that is something they've agreed to at zero percent, so we can, and it's budgeted in our CIP for last year, this year, and next year, so we will have the funds available for that. They're very flexible, which is, which is nice.
Anyone else have questions? Otherwise I entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the Civic Systems.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded twice. Any other discussion? If not, all, are all for, say aye please?
Aye.
Against? Motion passed.
And then I'll just mention the other thing, I don't anticipate us needing all the travel expenses. We're pretty savvy when it comes to virtual, so we're going to use that option as much as we can. And, and it seems to be, they just plan for kind of the worst-case scenario and we, we probably will not need all that. My second item I wanted to bring up that's, is the item I had just emailed Council about with some of the planning that is happening at the county level. The county is looking to build a new admin building on the lot across the prop, across from their existing order treasurer's office and facilities. And they have approached the city on if there is any interest in their existing buildings because their plan is to basically migrate almost all of their staff over to a new facility, probably in the next two to three years. I was just wondering if there was any interest, if maybe we could establish a committee of council to look at that. The county is more than happy to sit down with us, we could tour the facilities. It might be a good option to explore prior to putting any more renovation or anything into this building. Doesn't mean, you know, we have to decide right away if somebody, if we were to acquire that building, who is going, but I think it's an option to look at. We have some needs in the admin, just, you know, with remodeling we've talked about. We have a police department that's stepping over each other in the back room. You know, we have a library that we still need to be able to provide for. I think it's worth looking at and so I'm asking the council if there's some interest, if they would like to establish a committee and explore that option. Don't have to make any final decisions now, but the county would like to know if there's any interest.
I think it's a great idea to look at it and I'd love to be on the committee to explore this.
I would too. I, I mean, I think it's a, something to look into, especially as we continue to grow as a city and our police force and library. I think it's important to look at options, especially if it's something we can partner with the county on.
Yeah, and I, I think it, it might be a very cost-effective option for us. And, and just so you know, they aren't certain of what is needed in that old courthouse. I think the focus that the county is saying is the, the newer portion that was built in the seventies and the eighties, which they have put new furnaces on and new roofs and have maintained, you know, the, the older section is a little bit different, but we can all explore that when we look at the building.
How many do, would you like for a committee?
Two, yeah, we don't want a council quorum.
Does anyone have a problem with Jeff and... Brandon, Brandon? I was going to call you Jared because everyone's Jared again tonight. Those two being on the committee?
I have no problem with the two being on the committee, but because we will be asked in the future to make some kind of decisions, I'd like to see the council tour of the building.
Yeah, and we can do that, we just need to set it up as a meeting and then, you know, inform the public of a quorum. And that's, we certainly can have everybody tour.
Okay, so, we'll have Brandon and Jeff be on the committee for looking into the existing county building.
And then if you want, otherwise we can, I can certainly take Deb, we can take you over another day or whatever, we can, I absolutely understand, if we proceed with any acquisition, you guys should definitely look at it and there'll be a recommendation before the council in that consideration.
I also think with this opportunity, it'd be a good idea for all hands on deck to explore what the police department would need, what the library board would need, so we can do it all in one shot instead of dragging it out.
And I'd, I'd include, you know, Public Works, all that stuff, we have a lot of needs that we need to talk about.
Do you have a hundred-year-old building?
Okay, that works for me. I will get, coordinate with two council members and then, you know, we'll come back with some more information hopefully in the next month or two. And I think that's all I have right now unless you have questions for me.
Hearing none, we'll go to old business update on the wastewater project.
Evening, Mayor Compo, cheers. I just wanted to provide you an update on a couple things. As it was noted in your package this evening, the variance in the flatting process is important with the location of the order control building. We did have a construction meeting here this afternoon. The contractor was in last week, as some of you may have noticed. They installed some sanitary sewer west of the Broadway lift station. They wanted to get through that bowl area before, at some point the snow will melt, so before the snow melts. They got that done, they'll be back on Thursday, weather dependent, to do some seating and blanketing and things of that nature in that area. One thing they did share with us initially, before we knew what the duration of the spring was going to be, they had anticipated that they're going to be in here in April. At the meeting today, they shared with us that due to the weather, it looks like it's going to be more like the end of April, beginning of May. So, certainly understandable as a result of all the snow and the wet conditions, drying things of that nature, but nonetheless, when they do come in, they will be full force of three crews, so it will be a very, very, um, significant construction.
I have a question. So, the pipe that got left in the right-of-way, our concern, I work for the county, our concern there was if it got damaged, so, a lot of that stuff just got laid out and left. So, that's my only concern is if they could let us know if some of that did get damaged or anything like that happened over the winter, whether it was a snow bill, who knows what could have went in the ditch.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, I mentioned to the contractor, all the pipes that go in will be tested, so that we're a hundred percent positive.
Good. Anyone else have questions for Jared? Thank you. Oh, I guess we have one.
Do you want to just say anything about electrical transformers or don't want to put a worry in there? With that and generators? That's no pain in the stomach.
Yes, similar to pretty much every project around the nation right now. Material deliveries are, are going to be a struggle. The electrical service providers shared with us that they're having a problem getting transformers, which are required at our lift station. So, we're going to, we're continuing to monitor that situation, but the, the moral of the story is there, there could be some delays due to the delivery of equipment. And I know they're feeling bad about it, according to their numerous times of meetings today, but at the end of the day, it's just materials that are available, so we'll continue to keep you updated on that. Not panicking yet, but it's all there hanging out there, so.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to, just make sure the council understood, we had a number of people that kind of came together and got a lot of things done in a short period of time when it came to the order control structure. So, we had some adjoining property owners, Mindon Township, and then some staff at Bolton and our own staff. We cut through a lot of complicated processes in a short period of time and the county board as well. So I think it's just important that the council understands that it took a group of people to get through that and, and get over those hurdles to get to that point where we can actually acquire property. Couple more weeks of stuff to go, but it's looking very positive, so I'm optimistic that we'll be through that and hopefully see a construction on a building there in May or so.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Any other old business? I have a little old business I want to bring up, just run through the council. There was talk last year about the sprinklers and if a property owner wanted a private meter for a sprinkler, is that, is there interest within the council to go forward with this again? I can write something up or am I beating a dead horse here?
No, I think there should be some justification of that.
Yes, no? I can bring something forward then after that?
Yeah, I think more details.
Okay. Yes?
No, I, I agree, we need more details.
Yeah, bring it forward.
So, Mr. Thompson, I'll work on something. You're, you're the lead guy, you're, you, you're the, you brought this before us, so I'll, I'll get to work on that and hopefully by next meeting we have some form of, uh, what we could do for you or do for the citizens. Correct. Any other old business? Any new business? Mark has new business.
I actually kind of, well, when Jared Bogey talked, it made me think of it at our meeting today. In the last couple years, we've talked about a secure gate at the Compo site. We budgeted a little bit last year, we budgeted more this year.
I was going to say, we'd budget ten thousand?
Yeah, we, yeah. Reason why it came up, Nick Bischoff from Design Electric asked about it today, he would implement it possibly into his, when we drop in for the lift station to drop by power. I mean, should we continue to get information? I mean, another one of those things, I mean, you're in favor if we can do it within budget to at least get information to bring back to you to possibly get some sort of a more secure gate and a camera there or something at the entrance?
So you're just looking at, leave the existing bullards or whatever you call those in the ground so people can't drive around them?
Maybe make that a little better.
Make that more workable?
Yeah, oh yeah, push it in.
Does this be a key fob thing?
No.
No?
You almost have to.
Okay.
That's what we'll have to do. I'm just, if we can get some sort of information, it's somewhere, you know, started pulling that chain, you know, they're out there, we're out there whenever, doing that, whether we go out there and swipe it or, you know, PD goes out there and swipes it at night or we get one where we sell them for twenty bucks a fob.
That was what my question, because I worked for another city and we sold the fobs and, you know, so we had to have software.
Several cities have gone that, I know that one city had trouble with their gate, but a city just installed, Wade Park just put, one of them, Sartell just put one in.
So then basically it's going to be just like any other soccer rapids or any compost, there'll be a fee to use it?
I think a minimal fee to, we would want to cancel the cards every year.
If you're doing the, if you're doing the fobs.
It's information we'll bring for you, I just wanted to say, are you guys in favor? We had budgeted for it, can we work with Design Electric when they?
Are we in favor of this, council?
Well, I'd be in favor.
We need more information, excuse me.
Well, definitely more information. I'd be for it if it would extend the hours.
If we would be able to extend them a lot then, especially if we had cards, you could make it open seven days a week from eight AM to eight PM.
Along with security, so we don't have the illegal dumping that we've had in the past. But I, I definitely want more information.
We, we still have a camera out there, no, right? No? I thought you guys put one up.
And if, am I understanding correctly, we, these aren't eligible for like score funds?
We've tried score, we have denial, verbally got denied, we actually did a, submitted a request, got denied in writing, so it's not, they will not cover, so it'd be a time now to, you know, somehow share the power and...
And, and that...
I think, I, I bring less information and I think we should have a public hearing if the people, I mean, they're the ones that are going to be paying for it.
Right, right. It's going to be twenty bucks a year, that's...
I, yeah, I understand that, but I also want to make sure the citizens are okay with that.
Well, and it's not, you know, the compost is used by not just city residents, it's used by a lot of county residents too, which is why I think we've been able to get the score funds that we have been able to get to as they recognize that too.
Would this, with the information that we can get, would that be something that the county might work with us on?
Well, like I said, it's not eligible for score and that's the only thing we've ever been able to get. I mean, we could ask, I, I don't know.
I assume they're going to say we're getting score grants already from the county then.
But there's a lot of other people that use the facility. We do know that.
I just wanted to bring up along, make sure we're on the same train.
Yeah, see how much it costs, yep.
Thank you.
Any other new business? I, we'll have another open forum, anyone else or anyone would like to add anything on open forum right now? Any of the council? I, myself and Jeff attended the Mindon for the order control. I was at Chamber, I was at the human trafficking, Brandon was at the human trafficking with me as well, and I was at the S A L breakfast, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Gondik was there, I saw those two.
Saw you there.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Quick personal note, my son was diagnosed with leukemia two weeks ago, so I've been running to the cities pretty regular and I talked to Mr. Thompson, I said, "Give me a month, let me work on this, I'll get back to you." So, I will continue to be mayor, but if you have something pressing, let me know, I'll get to it, it won't be the next day. So with that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, one thing, Jack.
Go ahead.
If there's anything that we can do as a council to help this difficult situation, please let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that. Alright, motion adjourned, it's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, I'll say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.